This is Shannon Rutherford, I'm the Town Planner for Farmington. And we have our Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. I will do roll call of our Commission members. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Hotbogner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Here.
Matt Bandle.
Here.
Bobby Canto.
Here.
James Rockliff.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Mike Grabulis is absent this evening.
Okay, thank you Shannon, good evening everyone. My name is Inez St. James, the current Chair of Town Plan and Zoning Commission here in Farmington. Today is Monday, September 11th. We're starting a little early at 6:30. We do not have any public hearings, so nothing to read Scott. Ms. Bandle, for the first three items, are you comfortable being a voting member?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so let's begin. First one is a sign application from Poiant Signs. It's for Jordan's Furniture located at 500 South Road. And who do we have?
We have Bethany Leonard is on the phone.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, good, thank you.
Bethany, will you just give a brief rundown of what the application is? John is on as well, he's called in.
Yes, absolutely. So we are proposing three exterior non-illuminated signs. The front sign is going to be, they are all constructed the same way, they're all fabricated out of aluminum. They will be mounted to the storefront. And the total square footage is a total of 337 square feet. The front main sign, which is on the screen now, is 275.68. They will, all three will have some external building lighting, but everything to do with the sign is non-illuminated itself. The site was former Lord &amp; Taylor location. They had signs basically in the same locations. They did have one in the front of the store. And then they had two at the parking deck. There are two entrances at the parking deck. First floor and second floor, so we are proposing to put one at each of those entrances. Those two signs are constructed the same way as the front main sign. The difference is they are smaller, those are about 31 square feet each. And those will be at each of those entrances from the parking deck. And basically visible from the parking deck where the main sign in the front is visible from the parking lot when you enter the mall area.
Okay, and John, do you have anything to add? John Hanley?
No, the only thing Shannon is that the amount of signage that we have proposed here is consistent. And in fact, it's less than what Lord &amp; Taylor usually had. We have tried to retain, I think it's 113 or 114 additional square feet for the restaurateur that we have signed a lease with. That will be submitting plan shortly for permitting. For exterior signage, which we'll have to come back for that approval. Collectively totally, it will not exceed the 451 square feet that Lord &amp; Taylor previously had.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will turn it over to Commissioners to see if there are any questions. Matt, let's start with you.
No questions.
Okay, Patrick?
No questions, thanks.
Scott?
No questions, thank you.
Liz?
No questions.
Matthew?
No questions.
Bobby?
No questions.
James?
No questions.
Okay, I guess we know, well, as presented, we know what we're voting on. There are no questions, so we need a motion in a second, please.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application by Poiant Signs for Jordan's Furniture located at 500 South Road. Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, sounded unanimous, thank you. Your application is approved and Shannon and Town Staff will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you for calling in. Alright, thank you. Moving right along, another sign application for property located at One Munson Road LLC. And it's for Yukon Health. And we have Kyle, hi there.
Oh, okay. Hi. How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Kyle Richards for the applicant. One Munson Road LLC. As I'm sure you've gathered from this application, the good news is that we secured Yukon Health as the primary tenant for the first of two buildings on the Munson Road site. This endeavor in particular is the Brain &amp; Spine Institute, which is an expansion off of what they have currently up on the hill. But I'm very pleased that we, it didn't happen overnight, we've been working on it for the better part of six or seven years, but pleased to report, of course, that Yukon Health signed a lease for 20 years. So it's an important initiative. And as part of that, as part of that initiative, they'll have an MRI and other large imaging equipment onsite, so I think it's, I'm pleased to report that. So the application before you is for exterior building signage. You'll see in your package that the signage resembles closely what you've seen on our other buildings on Farmington Avenue and South Roads. These are exterior lit signs, so there are three of them. There are two on the front portion of the building as you're looking now. So there's a Yukon Health sign right of the front entrance. A Brain &amp; Spine sign over the front door. And a, another Yukon Health sign which mirrors the one on the front of the building on the south side of the building facing South Road. These are again exterior lit signs. The profile of the letters is a 3/4 inch acrylic, again identical to what you see on our other buildings. And the way, the construction of the LED light bar, it's basically pinned above the sign. Very sleek arms extend from the building. And then there's as sleek as we can possibly get it, but an LED light that shines light back towards the sign. So it's a very efficient way to do it, directed just at the sign. And this again is an execution that you've seen on other buildings along Farmington Avenue. All of the calculations with respect to the building signage meet your regulations in terms of total signs. There will be no other signs on this building. Yukon is the only tenant, and this is the only request for this building. I don't think I'm missing anything on that. Shannon made a comment with respect to the the white lens, that we proposed a 500K light, but as she pointed out, only 400K is permitted. Certainly willing to meet that standard and yeah, there's a site plan as you can see on your screen.
Alright, thank you, and congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, we'll do this again. How about this, this end? James, do you have any questions for applicant?
No questions.
Alright, Bobby?
No questions.
Matthew?
No questions.
Liz?
No questions.
This is what happens after we have a break. We're just ready, we're so ready. Alright, Scott?
No questions.
Patrick?
Same here, no questions.
Okay, you're good too. So again, congratulations. When will it, just curious, when will it be occupied?
We're targeting December 11th, so for the first portion and then the radiology portion will be in the early part of next year. They'll have to crane in the big MRI equipment, but early next year, so it's, we're excited.
Excellent. Alright, so it sounds like based on no questions, we're ready to vote. I need a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion, excuse me when I clear my throat, to approve the application by One Munson Road LLC, a sign application for Yukon Health at One Munson Road.
Okay, second? Sorry, I'm looking at.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Sorry Patrick. Staring through you. Alright. Let's see, one more item here before we approve or accept some applications. This is from Farmington Historic District. It's, we're going to be reviewing and providing possibly a positive referral on a property that hopefully will become part of the Historic District. And who do we have?
I'm just gonna roll with it.
Okay, sure.
Garrett can answer additional questions if there are any.
Alright.
Garrett authored the report for us, so, but the owners Katie and Jared Ritter contacted us. They were interested in entering their home into the Historic District. It's on Waterville Road. It's located just north of the intersection with Route 4. And it's in sequence with other homes. We did the neighboring property last year and went across the street. And then this larger piece, we did, I think, two years, two or three years ago, were all added in. So there's been some interest in that corridor and adding properties in. The home is a Noah Wallace home. It's on our historic research inventory that's in the library. So the Historic District Commission obviously is quite interested in having it added in. Thankfully, like I said, the owners came to us, it's a voluntary request to add their home to the Historic District. The report has gone to the State Historic Preservation Office for their review and approval. We expect that in October? Okay, in November. And then once we get their sign off, then a public hearing will be held with Farmington Historic District Commission. And then it will go to Town Council for final adoption because it does require an update to the town ordinance to add that property to the ordinance. So there's an amendment to the ordinance. So if there's any questions, then we're happy to answer them.
So when, we will be providing hopefully is a positive referral, right? Alright, so Matt, questions?
I'm good.
Patrick? Scott?
No questions.
Liz?
No questions, it seems like a logical addition to the, to the district.
Matthew?
Agreed, no questions.
And Bobby?
Same here.
And James?
Keep the good times rolling.
Yeah, I too think it's a great idea to preserve peace of our community, and thank you for the homeowners.
Perfect.
Recognizing it, so we need a motion in a second, please, for positive referral.
I'll make a motion, positive referral for, to FHDC for review for the study report from the Farmington Historic District Commission Study Committee.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, unanimous. We are good, thank you. Alright, the next several items, we are accepting applications. And first one is, excuse me, Wilson Development. And whoever's making the motion, if you can read it in its entirety, please.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by, I'm sorry, yeah, to accept the application by Wilson Development for re-subdivision of Banbury Crescent Increasing roadway width to meet public road standard, R40C Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 27th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're good. Next is an application from Christos Theodopolis.
Okay, I'll take that one.
I almost did that one at first.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by, from Christos Theodopolis for a special permit to construct a new home in excess of 1,600 square feet finished living area and 2,200 square feet total area at 33 Junior Road, R12 Zone, and schedule a public hearing date with a recommended hearing date of October 11th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Next, application from Udolph Properties.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Udolph Farmington LLC for special permit to convert commercial office use to one-bedroom apartment located at 780 Farmington Avenue FC-FV Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 11th, 2023.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, application accepted. One more apartment.
Okay.
Awesome, we'll add it to our list.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by, from 402 Farmington Avenue LLC for a special permit for intensive construction, rock crushing, associated with construction of 184,772 square feet multi-family apartment building, SIFZ Zone, and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of October 11th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, application accepted. Hopefully everyone is here for the next few meetings. Alright, Shannon, do you want to run through Planner's Report and then we'll do the panel?
Yep, I've got two quick things, I've got a minute or two. So the first one is 1800 Farmington Avenue, the mobile gas station, and the owner is on, or the tenant is on. So the mobile gas station has leased tenant space inside for the farmer's cow dairy mart. And it was originally approved to include just some fast food type, easy grab-and-go, cold sandwiches, ice cream, everything to be consumed off-site. In October 2022, the building permit that came in also included a tornado oven and panini maker. It's located, so the door, this is rotated 90 degrees. The door's here at the bottom of the page, kind of where the word tornado is. So this wall at the top of the screen, there's a U and a V, somewhat shaded in. That's where they were going to have the tornado oven and the panini maker. When staff reviewed it, we looked at it as heating and preparing really pre-made sandwiches and did not consider it really a major change to what had been approved. The applicant now wants to install a countertop grill to do hamburgers onsite. And it requires an exhaust fan. So to look something of this nature, about 16 inches by 16 inches roughly. There's a vent and a hood that are, go with this. So I've been very clear with the owner that they have to, there's still no seating, it's still grab-and-go, that this is not going to morph into a restaurant. At a 16-inch grill top, I'm not really concerned that this is going to get too out of hand, it's not big enough at this point. He indicated he was not going to be doing breakfast sandwiches. But I don't know. Moody, are you on right now and available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So do you have anything else to add to this request that I may have missed?
No, that's about it.
Okay.
It's just a small countertop that we're going to be doing hamburgers on at lunchtime.
Okay. The hood on the rooftop, so the vent stacks on the roof will have to be screened. And the applicant has agreed to bring the vent stacks as well. So, and there's structural drawings that have to go with that, that'll be reviewed with the building official. So really, it's just, it's morphed from cold sandwiches, whether they're pre-made or made onsite to now to include hamburgers, if there's any concern with that expansion of the convenience store use.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, because it's in for building permit with me. So we've been back and forth a bit for review and approval, and I've held trying to get additional information, so we either need to say, okay, it's, you're comfortable with where this is, and it can go ahead for building permit, and I'm okay to sign off. Or you think it warrants additional information and the applicant actually coming in and having a conversation in person with the Commission? Those really are the options that are both of you.
So this went through the Health Department because of the ice cream, right?
Correct, and it went through Health Department with the change to the cooktop, and that's what necessitated then the venting to the roof, that and between the Health Department Building Official and Fire Marshal, necessitated now venting to the roof.
And this is just perception, but the ice cream, I don't feel like that really took off. And like for 16 inches, you know, that's a very small, right, platform, so I don't think it's a huge deal. What about precedent with other gas stations?
I mean, they'd have to, it'd still come through the bill, I'd do the same thing I'm doing tonight.
Okay. Okay.
So it amounts to the scope, and for me, there's no seating. So the concern is with something that's being cooked, they're there longer, right? So now we're now into a parking and the coming and going from parking. It's hamburgers, it's not, I still don't think it's necessarily going to be a crazy amount of traffic and problem, and if it is, then we'll have to deal with it at that point, but I don't think it's going to be problematic.
Okay, thank you. So Matt, we'll start with you, you have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, sure, is there any outdoor seating or plans for outdoor seating?
No, nor will it be permitted.
Okay.
That was discussed with them, and they thought they were going to put, they thought they were going to put seats over at the park, and we said absolutely not.
Got it.
Right.
That was it, thank you.
Patrick? You're good with the application.
Yeah, I'm fine too.
Liz?
I'm fine also, that was my one question.
Matthew?
Nothing for me.
Bobby?
Good, thank you.
Okay, I guess we're saying proceed, Shannon.
Okay, alright Moody, you're all set, you'll, I'll follow up with you tomorrow, and we'll finish off those building permits then, okay?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you for calling in, alright. Okay, next one up real quick is sign change. Toro Logo had their last meal at Labor Day weekend, they shut down, they're reopening as Sugro Trattoria Italiano. The sign will not be painted on the wall. I explained to him that the sign can't, the mural can be painted on the wall, the sign cannot. So the sign is actually going to be painted onto the backer board of the Toro Logo sign. The same lighting is going to stay, so it's going to be the same size, we discussed size. So if there's no objection, then he's going to proceed right to install, really. It's the same backer board, so it doesn't even have to come off. So if there's no objection across the board, then I'm just going to let him continue. He's hoping to open, be reopened within a week or two.
That's awesome, another restaurant, I love it.
Same ownership?
Yeah, are we, any objections or?
Objections.
Nope. Do we know when they open?
Couple weeks.
They're going to open in a few weeks. Their intent is before the, before October 1st.
Wow.
So.
Very exciting. It's talk of town.
Actually it is. It's, well, yes. So then the only other thing we have for you folks are meeting minutes.
Okay.
We can move into our work session.
Thank you. Alright, so yes, we need a motion and a second to approve the July 31st meeting minutes, and also from the work session of August 2nd.
Combined?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 31st, 2023 Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And the August 2nd, 2023 Town Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, both minutes approved, thank you. This is so exciting, alright. Alright, so thank you, thank you so much for joining us. Farmington, like other towns, we lack affordable housing, both to rent and to own. I'm very happy to say we have a very collaborative commission, and we've been attempting to come up with a workable solution for the town. Many of us will be ending our terms this year. But I would love to pass on the torch to the new commission, so they have something that we can continue working towards. And we really appreciate you coming in. And how do we want to run this?
Just take a minute to rotate seats, I think we're going to have Garrett sit here.
Sure.
I'm going to sit down at the table.
Okay. Okay.
And we, you all.
Awesome.
Come on down.
Got to double check, right?
Alright, so I'm, I've got down here with everybody. And we're gonna, Nancy and I will share a microphone. But I thought this would be helpful, then everybody's looking at one another, although Jeff did point out to me this morning that it seemed like Senate hearings.
Oh yeah. Oh, no, no.
Free court hearing, so hopefully.
We're not going to swear yet, no, alright.
Where's the paparazzi?
So hopefully we get a little more casual than that, would be the intent. But I thought what would be helpful is to start, have each of our panelists just do a brief introduction of themselves and their, through the lens of their experience with affordable housing. And then everyone has a copy of the questions, it's been provided for everyone, I printed a copy for all of you. There, those are the questions you all submitted to me in advance to share with the panelists. And then it's a benchmark for us, it's a starting point, and to keep our conversation going. Certainly as things are discussed, if there are other tangents, we're welcome to take those tangents. My thought is loosely at nine o'clock, we'll kind of do a check-in to see these individuals have graciously volunteered their time. I'm not intending to keep everybody here till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. So I want to hit, make sure we hit, you know, the salient points that the Commission's looking to really dig into. And we'll go from there.
Awesome.
Okay, sound like a plan?
Okay.
And then I am going to turn it over then to Nancy Parent to do a brief introduction of herself.
And sure, we'll go on down the line. Sure. So my name is Nancy Parent, I'm the Director of Community and Recreational Services. I've been with the town for 32 years. I always think how old my daughter is and add one year, that's how I figured that out. Our department actually handles a wide variety of things. We do supportive services, you know, assist people in the community, we provide recreational services. So, you know, all the different sports and programs that we do. And then the final part is the community services, which is the area that I handle. And that is all the oversight and programmatic to anything from housing to human relations, to our Equity Task Force. So my job is looking at the program operations of those types of entities. And I am also the Director of the Housing Authority. So programmatically, I run several different programs, and I know I was here maybe two months ago. Kind of went over some of the programs that we run. So I run a lot of the rental affordable housing programs, as well as a few homeowner-type programs. Our Cooperative Home Ownership Program and things of that nature. I am also on the State Mental Health Board with the, with the idea of looking at supportive housing and affordable housing for many members in our community who struggle with that as well. So I'm happy to be here and, you know, hope to be able to, you know, impact the conversation and answer any questions that I can.
Thank you Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, that sounds great. Actually, I always learn when Jeff and I are together, and now it looks like it'll be a good night. And thank you for having us, I think it's an outstanding idea. So I'm Greg Ugalde, and I am a builder developer, and we build around the state of Connecticut. And I'm with T&amp;M Building Company. I've also been National Chairman for the National Association of Home Builders, which is Um, I've also been National Chairman for uh, the National Association of Home Builders, which has brought me to every state. And I think that's relevant for our discussion and you'll see how that works tonight. Uh, I'm on the CHFA Board of Directors and um, I we just are wrapping up. Service on the Commission for Connecticut's Future and Development. So I think for now, those things are pretty relevant as to what we're gonna talk about.
Welcome, thank you.
Hi, uh, thank you also for having us this evening, my name's Jeff Sager, I live and work here in town. Um, I've been involved in affordable housing uh, for about thirty years. Uh, the first development I was involved uh, with affordable housing in Farmington was Heritage Glen on Route Six. I think that was about either twenty-six or twenty-eight years ago. Uh, the next was um, Westwoods, which is further down Route Six, closer to Bristol. Uh, and then in Unionville, Hunter's Ridge. And then out the back of the medical center on the corner of Munson and Middle Road, uh, Yorkshire. And then most recently, of course, eighty South Road, which you approved in, uh, what was that, uh, October or November last year. Which we were successful uh, in our application with Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and will be breaking ground a week from today. Um, and and thank you, of course, very much for that. Um, but um, you know, affordable housing is a lot of different things and the niche that we're in is in multifamily rental. Uh, housing, uh, and so typically, so in the four developments, in the fifth one that we're embarking on. Uh, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority has provided the financing for all of those. And uh, two of the, three of the five uh, involve the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. So that's kind of the niche that that uh, within the spectrum for domain of affordable housing we're in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll, like I said, we'll start with the questions, we're gonna run through them, we can. Deviate as we go along, but we'll start with what uh, what do you think is the largest single hurdle for affordable housing? Um, and then feel free to, if if it makes sense to jump into some of the others with respect to. Uh, success stories um, as well, so do you wanna start?
Yeah, and I'm thinking of this question more from a programmatic standpoint, um, and as far as affordable housing, one of the biggest is just. Availability of it, um, we have a Section Eight program in town, which is considered an affordable housing program for folks that meet the guidelines. And we, the last time we opened it was two thousand and fourteen and we only have ninety vouchers, we had eight thousand people. Apply, um, and from that we did a lottery and uh, that waitlist is still in existence, so um, that shows you how frequently. Um, you know, that housing becomes available, in our senior and disabled housing, we're finding the same, um, people will call us regularly and ask. To put their name on the waitlist and um, asking how long the list is and our answer is an average between three and six years, so it's. It's quite a lengthy wait to wait for any of the housing that that you're applying for, um, and then from a standpoint of. Getting more affordable housing, um, I think, and it's my my feeling that just land in space to to build another complex. Um, you know, we've been talking about it at the Housing Authority about the, you know, availability of doing another senior disabled. Complex and where that would take place, where the land would be available for us, so that's kind of the two areas that I'm looking at, the affordable housing from. And I could share a success story too, i- if that, um, just because, yeah, I always think of. Kind of, many of our programs kind of have that approach where we start with lots of safety nets in the bumpers and, you know, to really get people. Going well in a program and then be able to achieve, you know, do more and more, um, we've had a. Single mom who moved here probably twenty-five years ago, um, and was on our Section Eight program. Um, and Section Eight works that the rents that that you pay is thirty percent of your monthly income, so. Obviously, the first ten, ten years or so that she lived here, her her income grew, she went to school, she, you know. Afforded herself of every opportunity that she could and she had um, three children and was able to. Get to a point where her income was actually too high for the Section Eight program, at the same time, we had one of our co-op housing. Um, available and she was able to access some of the Section Eight funds to buy an affordable housing through the co-op. And um, she was someone who moved into town, her her kids actually were originally part of the Project Choice Program. Which is what it was called at the time, and so they were coming to Farmington Schools, living in Hartford, they ended up moving here to rent here. She ended up getting the proper education that that she needed to be able to, she became a nurse and, um, you know, was able to. Financially ageers, um, financially get out of the Section Eight program, but be able to purchase a home in in Farmington. All kids graduated from Farmington High, um, actually ran into one of them the other day and they're in their thirties now, so, uh. But just a true success story started with the Section Eight, you know, was able to move herself up through the program, so really proud of that.
It is awesome, wow.
It's uh, that 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 really is excellent because from my lens. We've done over four hundred affordable units around the state in four different towns. So for every success story like that, we wish we could repeat that, I mean, that's how many people need it in this state. I live in Burlington, my wife's town clerk there, we follow this stuff pretty closely, the things that our town is going through exactly like you are. And the interesting part of this is affordable housing scares everybody. And for really no reason, I mean, we can do things, I mean, I, we were on Home Connecticut for years, I'm still involved in that. And that's really simply an overlay zone, trying to get higher density, trying to get that portion of a home cost. Push down and make the infrastructure less expensive by pulling houses closer together. So you don't need all the utilities spread all over the place and that is really a model that is achievable. In a state like Connecticut, but everybody's afraid of it, when you look and one of the questions talks about. When you look at this state as a whole and the land requirements to simply build a single family home, it's ridiculous. It's not right really, because you don't need two acres to put up a a three-bedroom home. Especially in key areas where you could get where the infrastructure's already there, where you have shopping and utilities and everything else. So, we we had pretty good success, we used ninety-nine-year um, land leases for the first few hundred we did. The last one, I really felt Newington, when we did that, working with the town, they oversee it in their housing authority. And it's deed restricted, I like that much better, the the land leases, you're not gonna have your homeowners really hot panned and saying, boy. This hundred-page land lease that works for the state, this is something special and I'll talk to my kids about it, it doesn't work that way, they're just like, how long do I get to live here and? You know, when I sell it, how much of the appreciation can I take? And how about if I make this improvement and I put a room over the garage, can can we get that money back when we sell? And those documented improvements do count, so that's, that's what I would say, is that we have to get over the fear factor. And we have to really get to be grownups when we discuss this topic. Because it is needed, when you have the fifth best high school in the state, it's remarkable and congratulations. You're only going to be uh, enticing more people to move into town and it's always, it's got the best equalized tax rate. Next to where the airport is, but it's, it's just a tremendous town in so many ways. And that's why it's so important, you do what you do, but that doesn't mean that your first responders, your school teachers and everybody else. Should have a fair chance to live in the community as well.
Well said.
So the largest single hurdle, so there's so many hurdles, um, they come up every day and every step of the way. Um, but if I had to pick one, I would just say the amount of resources that are available. Because I know when I compete uh, at CHFA, they only fund about third, Greg. Of of the people that apply, so two-thirds do not get funded. And uh, Connecticut is great in terms of the resources that it commits for this purpose, but. You know, that that is the single biggest challenge is that there just aren't really enough resources. Um, probably my, uh, you didn't ask, but I'll mention it anyway, probably my uh, biggest disappointment is right now, there. Seems to be a lack of uh, focus on seniors and we've done a lot of senior housing um, over the years, but. I wouldn't be able to develop that anymore because it doesn't score well enough in the applications. And um, you know, the seniors, right, and I guess I'm one now, um, they're the ones who made this state what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And the notion, you know, so many are living on fixed and limited incomes, they're loyal to the state, they paid in for so many years. And there aren't any programs for the housing and, you know, we all know what's happening with the housing and they're getting squeezed and they're on fixed and limited incomes and. The the housing prices are going up astronomically, as is the cost of all the components, when they go to repair anything. So that's my uh, biggest disappointment. Um, Shannon asked me to mention the other towns that uh, we've had the privilege of developing in and those would be. In the Valley, uh, Farmington, Devon, Canton, uh, and then we've done a lot in South Windsor and in Berlin. Um, so.
I have a question, uh, are all of them uh, rentals?
Yes.
Jeff, okay. And um, I have one question for for you, Nancy, hopefully I'm messing up the order, but would you ever reach out to like a Jeff or Greg or?
I've actually spoken to Jeff on numerous uh, occasions about different housing and even when he's looking to build, you know. Being able to offer some of our waitlist.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and I think to piggyback on what he said about disappointment is not, and seniors, I think. Also require other supportive services when when you're looking at 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 building those, because we have wo-. Wonderful facilities that have been built that are for subsidized for seniors, we haven't built any in years for a while, I I wanna say Maple Village was built in seventy-four. Maybe, a- around there, but for a while, that was kind of the wave, everybody was building them and then it kind of stopped. And then you have the high-end facilities, but what you don't have is anything for those folks in in between. That might not be low enough to consider to be subsidized, but certainly can't afford those high-end prices of. You know, a pretty astronomical fee on a monthly basis to cover those supportive services, so.
Can I just add a s- uh, a quick um, statistic to that and I'm not gonna get this right, but. So if you look at the population in general, if you're building to affordable, let's say a sixty percent AMI.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something like twenty percent of the population might qualify, but then when you get into the seniors, fifty percent of that population qualifies. So, I mean, that is the best illustration.
Fifty-one.
Yeah, okay. So, so the need is far greater in that population.
We just had our retreat for CHFA, we're constantly looking to leverage and we have some pretty good minds that are working on that. The governor's plan for the missing middle is fantastic, it's all, it's twenty million each year and it's. It's not much, but when you leverage it, because remember, they're looking for twenty percent, if we can get twenty percent of affordable. That means you still have eighty percent fair market, so we're encouraging, we're driving development that way. But when you look at it, in in the beauty of it, it's eighty percent of area median income, it's it's, we're taking it to bonding at the end of this month. And there's still some cooking to do with it, but it's eighty and a hundred percent. That's very meaningful, if you run it through farming to numbers, you get real people that are helped by that. And it was so funny, because when we sit there, so. People were looking and saying, but how is that helping affordability, the 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 group that's used to thirty percent and fifty percent and things that. I can't even think about, I mean, we can't build anything with with our. Framework that we use to to make our our businesses profitable and so it was interesting to explain to them though. Why that's really driving a local economy more than anything, you need people. If there's a fire in Burlington, it's a little different than Farmington, if there's a fact, we're gonna have somebody driving an hour and a half to come put out the fire for us. Where's everybody working, where, you know, do we have enough in that that are nearby, so there's all sorts of. Uh, social aspects to affordability as well and I think that uh, in in those numbers is scary, I mean. Any way that you cut it, we are in desperate need for housing in the state of Connecticut. We've gotta get the 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 young people, give them a fair chance for some, earning some equity in their homes. Um, to be able to advance in the communities and and be able to start settling, we we lost many years. Of equity growth, so when we got out of school, that was a biggie, that's how you set your footprint and you started off. That's been missing for a while, so there's a, there's a generation that's looking and saying, I want the freedom to be able to go where I can go. If I'm not gonna see any other benefits, so we we've got some catch-up to do, but that's why it's so important. That we get a lot of these policies right and actually encourage the proper development and we can do that.
Thank you for being optimistic, when I read um, some of the things that passed and did not pass, my reaction was kind of like, uh. We could have done more. Um, so thank you for that, are you referring to the Time to Own Program or something?
Yes, I mean, when I, when I look at those, they're so busting at the seams, if we could do ten times that, right, it would be, it would be helpful.
So it's a program subsidized by the state for first-time home buyers, it's fantastic, I've done transactions with um. These buyers and some of the transit, like, there's no money coming to a table, right? Um, like some buyers will actually walk away from a closing with the keys and a check, uh, which is amazing, but uh, the stigma on the sellers. It's education, I think, but some sellers will not, of course, they can discriminate, but because they have multiple offers to choose from, they will. That will be on the bottom of their list, unfortunately, you know.
But think about how important that is, right?
I agree, I agree.
You you have to be able to pay to to, you know, make sure that your kids are safe and everything else. It's um, it's a wonderful program and that the the testimonials are just.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
And feel free, I like, it's, yeah.
If there's something, if it spurred, that's, this is a guideline that I will go to 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 continue the conversation. But if something's being discussed that you're like, hey, I wanted to piggyback. Go for it.
Well, Mr. Ugalde, I appreciate you coming, you you talked about the fear of affordable housing, I think one of the fears is. People's home are their biggest investment and biggest value, and I think a lot of people think affordable housing is going nearby and that's gonna hurt my property value. Can you speak to a little bit about how is that true or not true?
Um, sure, I I could speak, so so the towns that we have affordable housing in that that we've built. Um, we have a nonprofit now overseeing the sales, right, so they they've been around all. Jeff and I were just talking, we brought up one of the times we were on a panel together, he said, yeah, that was twenty-seven years ago. Wait a minute, right, that must, but I guess time flies, so we're in Torrington, Milford, Wilket and Newington. If you drive through any of those um. Communities now, the street trees have all grown in, but they they they're beautiful, they, do people really take pride, they keep them up? You would not, no, now they're a hundred percent too, by the way, so in the modern day, more. The the affordable cookie cutter deals now are about twenty percent and they're all mixed in, so you can't even tell at all. Because you can't drive by and say this whole thing's affordable, so so it works even better, but you cannot tell, um. The the way it works is when you have equity, we did Builders Blitz in in New Britain for um, Habitat for Humanities. And the only one negative for that was that the hundreds of people that were standing around opening ceremonies. That didn't have a house, asking us for houses, that hurt, because it's like, how did we pick these six, they're educated, they're given the. Um, they have to put sweat equity into it and everything else, now those are specifically, to answer your question. Those are clearly affordable, right, and you go by there today, right in the middle of they broke up a drug ring in order for us to have opening ceremonies. I mean, this is a tough place with people screaming and cars that cleaned up now that area and you couldn't even tell that these homes. That is probably one of the most. That is probably one of the most misunderstood aspects of, of, and that's why I have trouble with that term affordable housing. When I was, I'll stop in a second guys, when I was chairman for the country, my mantra was housing affordability. Changing that whole thing around, it's much more than a, a fiscally restricted cost of a home. It's this battle with material prices going up, interest rates going up, we have to find a way to put people in houses.
I'm gonna say Greg for governor.
Yeah.
No, that's, I like, that's all good. I, the term, I agree with you. We gotta do something with that, the connotation and I'm with you. You know, like if, if you work at Stop and Shop, why can't you live in the town you work in, right? To me, that does, doesn't make sense, but thank you.
Yeah, it appears to, just it's, when you say affordable housing, people think you're gonna put up a ten-story brick apartment building. Like South Boston or the Bronx or something and it's just the NIMBY comes out in everyone.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Jeff, do you wanna comment on that or you? I, I'm assuming you've probably.
Yeah, so this has been studied ad nauseam. There's probably, oh Kyle, um, so there's probably, I know that we've had that question and something we're involved in right now as we speak. And Tim Hollister has something like a hundred reports that have been, there is scant evidence of it. There's anecdotal, like, oh, these prices went down, but you know, if your domain's big enough, you're gonna have some ups and you're gonna have some downs. But it's very, there's really nothing to support the concern. You know, I think the big disservice that people conjure up in their mind is just that, you know, the section eight program in the early high-density, low-income housing in urban areas over the years, you know, became problematic. And people put things all in that category. When we're not developing, that's not what we're developing at all. Um, the program that I use is actually a Republican program. It came in in the Reagan administration in nineteen eighty-one. When he wanted to, he was elected and wanted to get his tax cuts in and he, he privatized it. He took affordable housing out of HUD and put it in the US Treasury, which, you know, that's the way Republicans think. Let's do a tax credit instead of a subsidy. And he privatized affordable housing, so to speak, so that when I build affordable housing, we do get loans from, um, whether it's CHFA or DOH. But the bulk of it, the equity and the responsibility, uh, is a private investor, which is usually a bank. Um, it used to be Fannie Mae back in the days, but like for instance, the one that I'm doing at Eighty South Road is, is going to be M and T Bank. So, um, you know, the, the perception that affordable housing diminishes or reduces property values. There's no evidence that I'm aware of to support that, either that I've seen personally in my life or that I've, um, read about. Um, and I think those concerns relate to a product that's not even built anymore. It hasn't been built in years, but still that image is out there.
Thank you. Uh, Nancy, I know we have co-op houses.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So do you wanna, cause those, I don't think necessarily everybody really, and I didn't until you and I have spoken about it, but, um.
Sure, yeah, because it's a way of blending that, um. Forty-six, I think we have now, forty-five or forty-six. Um, so it's where the town purchases the land underneath the house. So thereby it, it lessens the amount that the individual needs to mortgage to purchase the home. Um, and they're in neighborhoods everywhere. Um, it could be, other than a few small neighborhoods where we actually built the houses, the town bought the land and built the four houses there. Um, people wouldn't know where they are. Unfortunately, the four houses that we built on one street, I'll constantly get calls. So-and-so has someone else living with them. It's like, yeah, they can, they own the house. Um, but, um, I think it's because of that, yeah, because of that feeling. But it really, people that purchase the homes, they then lease the land back for the amount that the taxes would have been. Um, so for instance, since math, I'm a social worker, not a mathematician. Let's say three hundred thousand and the land is worth a hundred thousand, so they're only mortgaging the two hundred thousand. Just making it much more affordable for, for folks. Um, and if they're, as I said, they're throughout, and I think almost, I'd say probably fifty percent of our neighborhoods in Farmington have at least one, if not two, um, co-op housing, um, properties, which is really, really kind of cool. And we've had a waitlist, so they continually sell, um, and we've never had to go out on the market, um, other than in my entire years, we've had one that needed to go out, um, to the market. And there was lots of special issues with that one, um, but they typically sell to people on a waitlist.
The land has the land who wins the money. And, oh, so it comes from a general fund?
Nope, nope, we have a co-op fund.
Co-op.
And what we do is the land leases, back when we started the program, the land leases that people pay that's equal to the taxes, but it's not taxes, goes into this fund and over the years, we've built quite a large base. And that actually goes to purchasing new land for new properties.
Okay, the, the corpus as well is, or can you do it off of interest or is it that big?
We can do it off of interest, yeah. It's, it's, it's a good size that, that we can do that, which is nice.
One of the battles is that we have set up a system now in the state where we're actually using our public money to compete against towns. We just had an event four weeks ago where the first selectmen of these towns were livid that they tried to get a, a spot going in town. Get everybody to agree, forget about eight thirty G and the, the confrontational, let's do something that everybody wants. And they were being outbid by state money coming in from a pocket on the side and just saying, wait a second, this isn't supposed to be how it works. If a town is gonna jump on this and take the initiative and actually get this type of agreement, that we, we can't be using open space funds or some type of preservation that we're paying on our building permits or our conveyance taxes. It's ridiculous. We're taxed to compete against ourselves. Yeah, and they said, so anyway, and it was the first selectman that is saying this, and we took it right, you know, to the administration and we're, we're not done with that. Because that is critical and we've always felt that way. That you can't do this, you can't tell people that it's being used for this glorious thing that we're gonna have first responders living exactly where they need to, when all you're doing is you're prohibiting development everywhere. And that, that doesn't work that way.
Nancy, I have a question for you. So to build another Maple Village or more co-ops, you would have to approach the town council or like so if we have the funds, are we doing that proactively?
Um, for purchasing new co-op, that is built into the entire program. So every time we reach a certain level, um, we're able to extract that money out to purchase a, a new land, um, from folks on our waitlist. We have a waitlist of about twenty-eight people. Um, and then in the meantime, as current co-ops sell, that, as you know, when we have an open house, we invite everybody that is on that waitlist and they, um, potentially can make an offer and purchase. Um, you know, that, that property. So that's how they've kind of turned over without having funds. Typically, I've had a placeholder in the capital budget like every three years to help fund that, to fund land as obviously, when I first started, I think we spent like forty thousand dollars for land. That's not the same. But, um, so that's typically been a capital, um, you know, every three, four years, we'll, we'll put it in the capital. It, it's in, I think, three years out now, um, in there for the co-op. For something like Maple Village or a subsidized complex, that would actually come from either the state or CHFA or something of that nature where you're getting the money upfront, but then you're paying back in what they call a pilot to pay back a, a monthly stipend for getting the funds to build, to build that. That's exactly what, you know, we did for Maple Village. We've now, you know, gone past the time that we need to pay. We've, we've, we've paid, you know, we've paid our dues for, for that, for, um, Maple Village. But, um, you know, we are exploring other options for another, you know, an additional complex.
I was thinking of, you know, there, there's not a lot, but there's some land that's available, right? Privately owned. Like, is it a developer is gonna do whatever or could we provide more affordable housing? I, I don't know, it's just.
I mean, it's, I definitely think it's a conversation that we can have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Nancy, just quick, section eight vouchers, what, what's the funding source for that again?
That is from the federal government.
Got it. Is the town allowed to put, pitch in money towards that for those vouchers?
No, because it's, it's pretty specific and you, you, it's a lot of paperwork to, you verify income and they pay thirty percent of their monthly income um, towards rent. One thing we did do last year is we go by the FMRs, which are the fair market rents for the area. And as you know, Farmington and Unionville's very costly. We actually transferred over, which was a huge hit to the section eight program, to the small area FMRs, which better capture what our rents are. So we're capping them, the section eight voucher at a much higher level. That's really more in line with what, what the rents are.
Yeah, you, you said there was a large waitlist, so how can the town help with that waitlist?
With the section eight waitlist? I'm not sure. I, I mean, it is a federal program. I don't know that that is.
Again, uh, cause right, the idea here is inclusionary zoning or fee-in lieu and building permits to create an affordable housing fund.
Yeah.
Like, wh- where's that fund going and who, who's, who's being benefited from that fund, right? So I'm just thinking of individuals who are in need in this town and we're on a waitlist. Can we help with that waitlist somehow with what we're talking about here, building permit fees?
There's a few different ways. One is through the senior and disabled housing. But those, those folks that are on that waitlist might very well benefit from, you know, a complex that's built. There could be people on our section eight waitlist that would qualify as either senior or disabled. That actually, my guess is a lot of folks on that list may qualify as disabled. And then the other is, as I mentioned, the co-op, um, folks that purchase the home, but there may be a disability or something, so they, their income hasn't grown. Like my success story is someone that moved in, grew their income, et cetera. We do have disabled folks, younger folks that their income isn't gonna grow at that level. They're never gonna be able to get into another program or do more. So the, the idea of homeownership sometimes puts an undue burden and stress on them to be able to cover some of those expenses. One of the things we talked about is being able to help with large expenses and repairs to those homeowners. So that they can, you know, get a new furnace if, if they need. And actually, I think Jeff, probably fifteen years ago, you helped me with one, with one of our, um, places that we needed to put a new furnace, furnace in. Because their income hasn't grown at the level that the economy has grown. So if there's ways that we can help support them, then they can remain as a homeowner and be, you know, and continue to manage their home like the rest of us, you know, being able to do that.
One suggestion would be you start fresh. You, because you, you're, you see what happens. You get caught up in section eight. That's federal. You don't really need to know that necessarily if you wanted to. Say his Farmington's program, here's our white page and here's how we're gonna do it. What are your needs? Let's run some numbers, let's figure out requirements. You can look at best practices from around the country and there's some pretty creative programs around. And then you start, you set an example for the rest of the state. That's what I was encouraged by when I heard what you're doing tonight, is let's, let's clean this. If you start trying to pigeonhole into existing programs that are bogged down for unnecessary reasons, let's figure out something that works, works today. The, the severity of this problem, put housing is, is really a goal for all of us. You look at your food pantries in towns like us. And it's people that you're gonna see in church, that you're gonna see around. It's not people that you think are food challenged. And that's the type of problems that we have in the state of Connecticut. It's expensive to live here and people that are settled trying to raise their families. So if you really think you can in a wealthy community like Farmington, pool of money and then start where you think you can make the biggest, get, developers will warm up to this. If they think that they can help, they, developers will get behind us. We always jump at a chance to do this. What we don't jump at is dotting i's and crossing t's all day long and never get anything done. And that's what happens. If you give us twelve pages of rules with very few results, we can't get bogged down like that. We have to go to something that we could control and move forward. That's the key.
Can I offer just something on that topic as well? So I'll get to this other point in a minute, but in the big picture as a town, I think we need to decide what's our objective here. Now personally, as a resident, I feel that we should try and hit the ten percent because we're at eight point three, whatever and you know, it's visible and you can get there. There's a strategy for getting there. But, you know, you also have to decide what kind of affordable homes you wanna construct. So is it a simple family? Is it a rental? What is it? And then the strategy has to be, you know, worked into those priorities, if you will. But as it relates to Nancy's waiting list and winnowing that down, I actually would submit to you that the most impactful thing you can do is for instance, um, what we did at Eighty South Road, because the need is so great and the numbers are so daunting. And keep in mind, it's not just one year, it goes on and on and on and on and on. That you really have to lever what it is that you're doing, so you wanna leverage resources from the state. So, you know, we have recruited in for that development, twenty million dollars plus, right? And, and we contract in our application to give priority. We can't give priority to Farmington residents because that's discrimination. But we can give priority to persons on the Farmington Housing Authority waiting list and that is what we're, uh, contractually obligated to do. So we will have that opportunity and really be able to move that along. And those resources are going to be there for the next, yeah, whatever it is, thirty years. You know, all financially underwritten, et cetera. And it's not costing the town out of its coffers. Not that I'm looking to spare the town the money, but it's just that the numbers are just so daunting. It's, it's tough with the town's resources to make it work. So my, what, what we're doing at Eighty South Road is a conglomeration of federal resources administered by the state. And then state resources administered by the state.
Sure, that, that makes sense. I mean, the challenge I have with that is there's not much land to develop here in Farmington, right? There's one percent or two percent, right? So expanding the units to get that extra, I don't know, two, three hundred we need here in town seems like a huge hurdle. And again, we gotta chip away at it and work away at it. So how can us here on planning zoning help, help that? How can the town of Farmington help incentivize? We're not the state or federal government who clearly have more of a say in these projects, right? Cause they funded most of them, right? Or, so how, how does the town help?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I don't find that number is daunting. Um, we've had a privilege of developing fifteen hundred units in central Connecticut of affordable housing and probably three hundred are in Farmington or maybe more. I don't know, I have to count them up. Um, but I mean, it's, it's doable. And, and I, I think if you just look at, just i- i- if you don't frame it and have a strategy and have a plan. If you don't frame it and have a strategy, it's hard to put a plan in place. And if you don't have a plan in place, it's hard to measure what it is you're doing. And I, I think that for this commission, I think the biggest thing you can do is say, look, what's our objective here? What's our plan? Okay, and then figure out how do we get there? I, I don't, I, I think it's achievable. I, I, I think hitting the ten percent is very achievable.
That's great. I mean, a lot of the time, one of my questions here is why affordable? Why not just do market rate and a lot of the units that have come before us are all market rate? And we, we couldn't even, none of them were affordable, right? So from my perspective, it would've been nice to have some of those units. I think we approved a thousand units in this town are coming online, as you all know, in the next couple of years here, right? Based on building. We couldn't require any of those to be affordable and the developer wanted them all to be market rate. So, you know, what incentivizes them to be affordable unless we put it in the regulations?
If, so the concept of inclusionary zoning, it, it's very simple. You can require things, which is met with resistance, just is, because there's. You can also do it voluntarily. And I would say that if you had to do it all over with a few extra talks, you'd probably get ten, twenty percent of those units affordable. With the right levers, with the right ability to inject timely permitting with some funds that you could get your hands on. In the state, for example, we give high priority to to preserving units that are affordable. It's not renovating and preserving that way necessarily. It's preserving those restrictions into the future. That allow that affordability to stay in place. So so you got both of those things. But Farmington has quite a few places that you could look to existing stock. I agree, ten percent, that should be an automatic goal. I mean, you are so far ahead, you might as well get the cherry on top of the cake too. You do things well, you're sophisticated enough, you grab that ten percent and you get to be one of the good guys. And now everything opens up too. You have more room to move. You don't feel the pressure. Of having all these things coming before you. You can have a little bit easier roadmap and traffic comp being able. So. I think that you're in a good position. There's no question. And I think that the financial resources. Are better than you think they are for for leveraging some of these things over the next few years.
So so I think inclusionary zoning is probably worth the ten minute allocation of time on this panel.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Nancy, did you wanna say anything about that? I've got some thoughts on it, but.
You go ahead and then I'll piggyback it.
Bye. Sure, sure. So I have very mixed emotions on inclusionary housing. First of all, there's rental housing and there's for sale housing. I would think it's way more challenging to do it for for sale housing. Um, so let me just talk about um rental housing. So for what it is that we do, and Shannon asked me this question, and initially I said, you know, Shannon, even as much affordable housing as we've built. I am not an advocate of inclusionary housing. And then I really started thinking about it a little bit more and I I turned around. Um, and the reason I say that is that, for instance. If you look at a couple of the developer, many of the developments that you just referred to. Uh, they were then flipped in the very near term for big, big profits. And so the notion that, you know, the town didn't get anything and they made all that, that bothers me. So um I do think at least ten percent makes sense. Keep in mind, the ten percent, you're just treading water, right? You know, you're not, you're not making up ground. Uh, and so who does it impact? It impacts, it really doesn't impact the developer. Uh, as much as it impacts the seller of the land to the developer. Because if it's in the regulations, when the developer goes to buy the land and he knows he or she knows that they have to comply with that. Then that's factored in the price that the land. But so, you know, I think inclusionary housing does make sense. Now, having said that. I know from the developments that we've done, the market rate developments, if we had to, uh, you know, have some of the units be inclusionary, it's tough. It's very, you know, it's it's very hard. It was hard to make the numbers work when interest rates were low and costs were under control. Now costs are up, whatever it is, thirty percent and interest rates are double. It's that much harder. So it is a real struggle. But I think the mitigating factor is, as Greg alluded to, um, there's a program now for workforce housing. That uh Governor Lamont's has put in place. It's an excellent program. Uh, and there are resources available so that in the event that. You were to approve a development tomorrow night and it was a hundred units and you said we want ten percent inclusionary housing. There would be resources that that developer could avail itself of at the state of Connecticut to help. Um, deliver those those homes. So I I do think it makes sense.
It so in where I look at this being the most successful in areas around the country. Is that there's a huge component in that, that the first thing you do is recognize that you want some type of requirement. Could even be greater. So so maybe you start at ten and that's where you get, like you said, that that's entry level. But then you build from there, fifteen, twenty, maybe you pick up density along the way. Maybe there's things that are more favorable so that they're encouraging people. And the people that are going to pay the extra in a development, a community that we're putting out there benefit from that also. Um, I I work with some of the COGS around the state. And one of the, it was really interesting, actually, where we got together and it it kind of went toward the shore, there's thirteen communities. Some of the wealthier communities with beaches and stuff said, well, you can get the recreation from us. We'll use you guys for the landfills. And so I thought it started getting pretty creative. Alright, so you're gonna be where the dump is, but no. They they were really trying to work it through where everybody was gonna bring something. And then quickly they found out. That some of the people with newer sewers, with newer water, let's, okay, maybe we can target those areas. You're looking at one town here, but that same type of concept could could work. You identify parcels, maybe even that are already owned and not on the market necessarily to do that, but but people. If it's done properly, even getting ideas on how you're gonna write it up. What would make you want to give us twenty percent at eighty percent? Find out what it is. Well, you know what? If I got approvals and you were behind me, then it would, I think that's a great start. That's the kind of thing I think that we're we're seeing um a lot more. Receptive thinking on behalf of developers and the people that can actually get it into the ground. That's the other thing. You wanna try to avoid. Um, too many people that aren't used to getting into the ground and building. Like, you know, the most things get stalled and that's when you see leans and things. It can it can get rough because it's so tight right now. With interest rates, material delays, I mean, even getting transformers, just everything you look at. So I think that that's the 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 thing. And I Farmington, you're always gonna be able to sell a home. It's one of the most desirable places, I mean, this goes.
Nancy, you're good. Wanna add anything to it?
Yeah, I I mean, I I do think the more incentives and, you know, being able to have the ability to in in interact, to be able to. Increase that amount, um, because there might be some folks who might be interested in in increasing that amount, um. You know, it might be a great opportunity to even have stages, you know, at ten percent, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, you know, as folks are coming before. Zoning to discuss that, that they may be willing to up that if if what they're receiving.
Right, you know, for the terms.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, we talked about, both of you have alluded to the uh increased cost. Um, I. I I think it was one of the um maybe more more of us who made a question about. Um, I've seen it a few times now about our modular homes maybe being less expensive. Is there any truth to that?
Alright, I'm gonna, cuz I I wanna know before we go there, cuz I wanna come, I wanna stay where we were, cuz I've got two things.
Okay.
From a practical, like an implicat- um, how to apply this uh from what Jeff and uh Greg were saying with respect to. So I I apologize for interrupting.
Fine, it's in here.
Um, so Greg, you made reference to um our ability to. Easily get to ten percent or or that's how I interpreted it. Um, there's certainly existing. Uh complexes in Farmington that are not deed restricted and therefore don't count towards their ten percent. Um. Those, in order to get those to count, then we have to, we're we're talking to those owner, we're trying to get, then there's deed restrictions that have to get in place. But from a practical standpoint, too, there's more, there's the deed restriction and then what that, the perception of what that does to the value of their property. Um, and then there's the education. So whether it's an existing complex or. Other developers coming in for the inclusionary zoning, there's the education of. Going through the financing to try to get some of these and and take and avail themselves of the additional resources. As well as then the long-term management of an affordable housing development and the. Um, requirement to have to vet your tenants and I think for rentals, it's done annually. Is that correct? So how does, how do we, so we put this in place. Uh, we're 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 at a table with developers that are clearly astute in this process, um, but. Not every, the developers, I mean, there are clearly some of the developers we've spoken with are not. Um, how do we, how do we bridge that? I mean, that's a pro, like, and there's an education and a, and I don't even know. I mean, as the town planner, I can't even. Start to begin to say, okay, well, here's, here's where you could go to understand your funding mechanisms. And here's a playbook, if you will, of how you have to manage these. So we can put it in the regulation, but they don't know how to implement it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just thinking of your question and as you were going through a lot of the complexes in town, um. You know, we've got several complexes that their annual incomes looked at, et cetera, and. Ninety-eight percent of the folks in all those communities, we do annual income inspections with them for a variety of programs, whether it be. The state assistance, food stamps, all those sort of things where when we've talked to some folks, we're talking to the folks at Berry Lane right right now. That they don't have the manpower to do that annual inspection, but it's something we're already doing with. Everyone but three of their residents. We meet with them on a yearly basis to do food pantry, so to add in that extra is really. Is not a huge ask of an organization that does that, you know, all of our programs, whether it be. The families that qualify for, you know, subsidized lunching and the backpack programs and then the food pantry and all of those things. We have to do all those programs yearly. So to add in their rental when we meet with them. To to do that along with it, we're collecting the, we're collecting all that same information and we have access to the state labor and all of that to, you know. Determine, cuz not, we're not just asking you for your income, we're verifying it and and doing all of that. So that is an exercise that we're doing with. Probably ninety-eight percent of the folks that would qualify for different types of programmatic, you know, housing. Programs that it wouldn't be a huge ask to just add that on onto the list of things that we're qualifying folks for.
Okay.
So and that answers the that part of that.
So from the long term, then.
Yeah, that's not a, it's not a huge ask to add that on to our responsibilities. There's lots of other.
Right, they'd have to agree to the deed restriction.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So so Shannon, on the state housing finance project developments. Um, we do all that ourselves, so the town doesn't have any of that administration. We get audited every year. We submit it to the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. We submit it to the town. So it's it's all done, uh, and it's easy. Uh, in turn, if you were to come up with inclusionary housing and then impose, and again. My remarks are only rental housing because I think single family is a lot more challenging. Um, and there aren't programs for it. Uh, but in any event, if you um. Were to say, I want inclusionary housing in the regulations and what are, how am I going to know the developers complying with this? There's just, there's two things. I mean, you need to know the person's income. So you'd get an income, which you do have to get that every year, which isn't really a big burden. And then the question is how much verification of that income that you do. Now, in our developments, we verify every element of income and we run it down to the end. Uh, but maybe, you know, if somebody signs a certification under penalty of perjury, that's enough. So, but I I don't, I don't think it's that problematic. And so many towns are adopting inclusionary housing now that. I'm sure that uh we could follow the lead of somebody who's gotten out in front. I know West Hartford's doing it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're we're in a number of communities that that have a little bit more of a head start. That um West Hartford, Newington, they're doing it with their housing authority through deed restrictions. Um, C H F A, we're looking at now doing, um, I'm involved. In a hundred and seventy-five rental units parallel to Main Street in Simsbury. And we're really thinking about doing twenty percent town. Didn't know, we got it approved without affordability. But my partner and I feel strongly about putting affordable housing in. And I think we're going to. Put some programs together. We're gonna do it. My theory is that we're gonna get the the town to do a little bit of a tax abatement. And I want three prongs to it. We have to accept the fact that we're gonna say we have affordable housing there. We're gonna be proud of it. We think that we should be able to have people walk into downtown Simsbury from our upscale units. And so, um, when we pull this all together, that the state is telling us that they'll, you know, they're going to be able to. Service some of these, so some of the requirements to make sure that they're foreseen. This is, this will be a a rental situation. Um, but the the towns that when you go, we were just in South Windsor, um, Trumbull. There's a a few towns that are, you know, if you check the ten percent, and those towns are probably pretty good at it. So um, if you start by just finding out what their best practices are. And then if if you want, um, I I can get you directed to national best practice as well. Actually, Tim Bolster. Who was going to join us tonight, he did for we, um, at N E H B, I had them do for the whole country. He put together an inclusionary zoning information course. Which is very helpful to everybody now, but that's where all these discussions are going. They're that important everywhere in this country. But um, yeah, when when you bring it back home and you start looking at it, there's a big fear factor, even in the people that are trying to do their best, right? That's where you guys are trying to fight through this and figure out, okay, but we can't bite off more than we can chew. Because what if this falls down and we did all this work and we come up short? I don't think it'd 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 be that way. You know, and what I mean by the getting to ten percent, it's never easy. I don't mean to imply that. But it certainly beats the towns that are at one percent right now, you know, for starters, right? You guys can see, that's what Jeff said, you guys can see how far you have to go. And you can almost look at. Communities. You can look at programs and say, if we co-op these or whatever. Um, you can, you maybe a small group that says, let's target this. Let's do our top one hundred ways we're gonna reach ten percent. And start going down the list.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I, that was great. Thank you. It was needed. It was a good conversation. But um. I I guess so back to modular homes, is is there, is that cheaper to build?
Yeah, I think you have others who would be more qualified to address.
I I'm actually very heavily into off-site construction right now. I I just, um. I'm on one of the boards of the most fascinating companies, I think. There's five of us on the board. It's called Boxable. They have big social media presence. You open up the house like this and they can, you can pull them by car and stuff, cuz they transportation. And regulation are the things that are boxing us out. From being able to do off-site construction and have it accepted everywhere, right? Think about it, even in Connecticut. You have a hundred and sixty-nine towns trying to okay something. Where's the button that you can tell a factory that they can start delivering things? Some of the misconceptions about affordable eh uh about off-site construction, it isn't cheaper, really, it's not. It it's. Uh, but the energy efficiency that's built in, the resiliency, all the factors that you can get. You can make it very competitive, but your site has to be ready still. That's why in the northeast, it's been a little trickier at times. You have manufactured homes, that's with the um axles. You have modular, you have panelization. There's all different kinds of things that that you can use. So you're not looking at that as necessarily being the cost saver. It's going to be a time saver, which is where you start saving, right? Cost savings. But it's also, you're controlling your labor. It's much easier to. Get things produced in an environment that you could control. When we're on job sites, we're trying to bring people in from all over the place to keep them. Everybody staffed even with everybody aging out in our state and things, that's a challenge. So if you can put together these centralized locations, you're going to get much better performance. And um, you know, they they do things a lot differently too, uh, for technology being involved and things. It's a great way to go, but you just have to realize that it, nothing's a miracle cure at all. But you shouldn't just like for the longest time cedar used to be the only thing you could do in. But you shouldn't just like for the longest time, cedar used to be the only thing you could do in the state of Connecticut. Cause that was like pompous enough for Connecticut. But then people realized that everybody wants to watch football on Sundays. Who wants to be scraping their homes and painting them and paying all that money? Look at some of these vinyl products. We catch up eventually and we accept things. And you just, you have to use your heads and you can do a lot of nice things. But I do think off-site construction has a lot of answers. And if you're looking at, like, if it was a town-led effort, you could do very well by talking to a factory and, and, you know, we could, we could even help you. There's some good ones around that can deliver to the state of Connecticut. But I wouldn't, you're not looking at discounts in, in the sense that you're thinking when I saw it on the questions.
Okay. And any questions from this side for panels?
Just absorbing it all.
This has been, this is fascinating. It's a lot to take in.
Actually, I do have one question. You mentioned the scoring of the CHFA and how it's one-third of applicants get accepted. Briefly, could you define what that scoring is?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so, if you look at our body of work in affordable housing, um, there was a ten-year gap in there. And the reason was during that ten years, towns in, in and around Farmington, central Connecticut towns didn't compete well. So we weren't eligible for the funding. And then lo and behold, maybe three years ago, uh, those priorities changed. Where, um, they wanted to put more affordable housing in high opportunity areas where there was employment, access to transport, medical services, that kind of thing. Um, so farming, that particular site at eighty South Road is very close to several bus stops. Uh, and, um, the medical services, parks and recreation, the schools. Um, but most importantly, it's a high opportunity town, which those, those applications are scored. For instance, whether you succeed or don't, they're often decided at one point. But being a high opportunity town, I wanna say gets you nine points. So Farmington is a high opportunity town and there's an opportunity map. I think it's, uh, OPM publishes it. Uh, and then in addition to that, there was another six points because we hadn't met our ten percent. So towns that have less, uh, affordable houses. So those fifteen points were the big, um, differences in the application. Um, but they consider many, many things. Um, the different environmental things that I'm doing, the development itself. I mentioned transport. I, I can't even remember. There's just so many of them.
Okay.
But, but those, those were the big difference makers for Farmington. And, but the other reason I said it's such a good question is, I, I do think you need to put a strategy together and, and say, look, this is what we wanna do. Because you are beholden to the state in terms of their resources. And if their priorities change because the administration changes, or God only knows for what reason they change over the years, even though you may be well-intentioned in saying, yeah, we wanna approve this and we're gonna approve it and it's done. And then the developer can't get it funded because the town's not a priority.
Right.
So.
It's interesting. So, so I was on that task force. It's a QAP task force, it's called. And we do, we bring in the people that are successful, like Jeff, and we ask them, what worked, what didn't? And those priorities do affect what's going on in the state at the time. But they're also, when you look at them and you talk to the people at CHFA, it's a tremendous group, tremendous talent throughout that organization. Um, I, I'm very impressed by the staff and they, they continue to do a good job. We're bringing people in from all over the country that understand leveraging funds and making them work better for us. So while you have to be careful of that, you can see that the knowledge of the, the team that CHFA has put together, from staff to board to everything, you get that. That towns like Farmington, Simsberry, we should be able to say, if we could ever get housing and affordable housing in those areas, that's gotta count for something. That's certainly better in the state. We can do, like we always have, some of the areas that are challenged and we need to. But we actually frown upon going too heavy in those same areas. Because what are you doing culturally? You're setting up a situation where it's expected and that's where you live. And we just keep growing that population. That's not a, that's not a recipe for success. Coming into Farmington and bringing it up to ten percent is QAP though, it's looked at every year. And it's, and it's something that you can wrap your arms around as you're doing this. It'll be coming out.
Yeah, one other just quick anecdote is that, I mean, look at what this commission did when they approved eighty South Road. You, you went from the town, I wanna say, is it eight point three, is it eight point four?
Uh, I don't know what the, last I looked, we were at seven, seventy. I know Kyle, Kyle was running, Kyle's running.
Yeah, no, I think it's in the eights.
Okay.
But, but it raised it fifty basis points. It went, you know, if it was eight point three, it's now eight point eight or will be when I complete. So, I mean, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day. And, uh, yeah, for this commission to say, hey, you know, we brought it up a half a point from eight point three. I mean, that's a, that's a real accomplishment. Because if we are at eight point three, we've basically been stuck there, I don't know, for ten years.
Yep, so the priority, sorry, um, the priority that Farmington currently has, um, is that sunsetting? Is that, is there a certain timeline?
Qualified allocation plan that Greg alluded to is for two years at a time. And of course, it's not just Farmington, it's any town that qualifies as high opportunity town. So, um, it'll be, was for two, two years. And now it was just, uh, renewed for another two years. So that's all you're assured of.
Okay.
So Shannon, that brings up a good point that Jeff just mentioned and I'm, I, I think I put it in there. So what happens? Where's the town's responsibility or liability? Say, God forbid, Jeff, you get halfway through eighty South Road and you go belly up. And you can't finish the project. Where does that leave us?
Uh, you wouldn't get the, but if the project, well, first of all, the project's bonded. The development is bonded, so it will be completed. But if, for whatever reason, it wasn't completed, you wouldn't get, you, you don't, you don't get those points for your ten percent until it's placed in service.
And it, it has to be completed as a affordable housing.
Yes, oh, yeah, there's covenants and restrictions galore.
Okay, so you have to find somebody that's willing to take on that project as an affordable housing and complete it under those terms.
You mean, if I was out of the picture?
Yes.
I mean, presumably I would have been foreclosed out and then the authority would, you know, the lenders would, just like they would in any conventional mortgage loan situation.
Right.
But, but the covenants, the covenants run with the land, yes.
So it has to be completed as an affordable.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, it's bonded with CHFA, correct, in order to, so.
Yeah, the, the hoops that they jump through, um, it's, it's incredible. But they're rewarded with the, for, in the end, and that's why they're, they're successful. But that, that's exactly right. Because as you're sitting there worrying, we certainly worry with all the money we're putting out throughout the state. You know, one of these would cause a black eye that would be tough to, to rebound from in a lot of ways, the way that, that government scrutinized. So we have to make sure that we can fight through those kinds of.
CHFA is an incredible organization, as is DOH too. And they would move heaven and earth to make sure in, in adverse situations that things got completed. They're, they're a terrific organization.
Yeah, I'd like to hear you say that.
It's part of the volume of documents that were submitted with the, the application. There were two big binders that Hollister provided for us. And one of them was a needs assessment and was all the documents. And in there were, um, not the draft of the deed restriction, but there, it talked about draft covenants that be put in place. And so that, um, there are documents that get filed, that'll ultimately be filed on the land records. Some of them, the town is party to, some of them were not, because we're not the funding source. But similarly, just with our, so that's from our rental with our ownership ones for some of the neighborhoods where the town, nobody, Cabo and Cornerstone, there's some of the, the developments that they're townhouses and they're owned. So those declarations are also filed on land records. And we're responsible, it's our office then is responsible for certifying the sale price in the new homeowners. So some, similar, but, but different. There's as many protections as reasonably can be put in place.
One suggestion too, is I could see the fear a little bit, and I get that. When you go to your planning meetings and stuff, you guys, you should pow-wow with people that have done it to be able to talk about it. Because I think that you start relaxing more when you see the success stories and ability, even in West Hartford and other places. Because right now it feels like, geez, we're gonna be going through, you're not the first ones to do it, thank goodness. But you're going through, the beauty of it is, you're gonna be able to start and create something. So you can get rid of all the problems that other people have that can advise you on that. But it's a lot of work and I'm, and I'm not making light of it. It is, but I think it's worth it, well worth it in the long haul.
Keep in mind also with inclusionary housing, you work around the issue that you raised on, um, affordable housing. I mean, that's not what it is. It's inclusionary housing. So it's not even in the conversation.
Um, one thing that you mentioned, Jeff, tweaked my brain, talked about being eighty South being, or eighty South Road being on bus routes. And transit oriented development is, I know, quite a big buzzword in Newington with the bus line and through West Hartford and everything. And I know there's been a lot of push on that. And we have the bus route right on, you know, Route four and over by, um, the, uh, hospital. Is that something that we need to, to parlay a little more? I wonder, I don't, I don't know if that's something that, do we have enough and should we be?
Well, we have great bus service comparatively. I, I think, because I've gone to other towns trying to solve the same, uh, and the bus service is horrible.
Yeah.
Um, but even Southern is challenged. So Farmington's got great bus service.
Okay, so it's something maybe we, yep.
Yeah, no, but that, that issue in that observation is a good one. Because that is something that, that you could look to improve, effectuate and, and highlight. Because it does help.
The, the health center is a big driver of that transport.
We just need a store there, a grocery store.
Yeah, you do.
Be nice to have a grocery store.
Yeah.
But Liz, I would love to just to answer, um, I think that the bus route going down Route four definitely meets needs. But there are certain parts of the community that aren't met by the bus route. And we span two different bus routes. What a lot of people don't realize is we're in a weird location here. We're part of the Greater Hartford, but we're also part of the New Britain, um, area. So very often, you're talking about a three bus switch for some folks from debt. So getting to the hospital is wonderful if you're anywhere on Route, um, four. But up one seventy-seven, you're dealing with the Bristol-New Britain route. And it just, it creates a little bit more havoc. And where it really affects clients more is the ADA and transit. Because if you don't live within three quarters of a mile of a bus route, which a lot of our seniors have and stuff don't, then you don't qualify for that ADA bus route. So, and they won't increase it if it's not existing. So for instance, we used to have bus route on Saturday and Sunday. They stopped the bus route on Saturday and Sunday. If we had had it, then folks who were qualifying for ADA could get that Saturday and Su- Sunday bus route. So there are some complexities to. Yeah, to the bus route that I think some people don't realize. And then there's some of the folks on the outline that affordable housing might not be the issue, but the transportation is, is a huge issue. Um, we break our town, you know, in half based on where they're accessing that, that bus route service from.
Yeah, anecdotally, we had someone who worked at, at school and she was a cleaner. And she had to take, I think, two or three buses to get from where she lived to work at Noah Wallace and then had to walk, you know.
And then if they're all five minutes spans, then you're talking, it's a whole hour waiting for different bus times.
Right.
I mean, I've, I've experienced that with, with, with folks even going to the state social services.
Right.
Yeah.
So, high-speed trains, how about that?
After the grocery store puts in a high-speed rail.
Any questions?
Yeah, just one, one, just, uh, change of topics on inclusionary. One, I'm curious if you have any experience. One aspect of our affordable housing plan is accessory dwelling units. Here in Farmington, we have a pretty really restrictive regulations, gotta be attached to the home and it has to be a relative or sort of a caregiver. Have any experience with those in, in your line of work or comments on that?
I, I think it's great. I encourage it, but I, I do think that it does have to, um, address some of the concerns that once you open it up. But I, I think that just hearing you go through it is a little bit too restrictive for the benefits that you would get otherwise. Because that could be a way that you address some of the affordability. If you opened it up, for example, if you said, okay, this could be a for, and I, I, I have not really looked into this specifically, just working through the steps. If you had regulations trying to target affordability, you might be able to broaden that. Why does it have to be attached? Maybe it could be over detached garage, whatever it is. Maybe it could be for rent or it could be, um, it, it, it's, it's really a rental situation. But could you get it so that it qualified for affordability under the rental structure? And could that be an incentive to do it the right way? I'm wondering if you could kill two birds with one stone. But in a town like Farmington, you should really do some homework on that. Because that is a good way to, um, and, and I know that you don't want it to be just a wide open door policy to have people just fluctuate in. At the same time though, it's a great tool for people you already have here. And people that are trying to come home from college and work around here. So it's a fine balance. And I think the benefits though, you'll find, if done properly and getting feedback from some of the more successful regulations, you might be able to touch on a few of these different areas. But they, I, it's one of the better tools that we've come up with in a while. Um, a lot of states, you're seeing that they do it as a matter of right, just because of how, you know, if, if you're looking down the barrel of saying, um, you know, some of the states that are just growing leaps and bounds. You know, and give you an example, so you have Texas and Florida that are well over two hundred thousand building permits here. Here in, in Connecticut, we're gonna be bumping around for four thousand. You know, we're, we're not really opening our doors so that we're bringing people in to work on our job sites. You know, anytime you look, we have between three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand job openings in our industry. And in Connecticut, it's even more because of the way we're aging out in this community and, and how expensive it is to live here. We have challenges that things like that do, do help address, especially in some of the upscale communities.
Good question, Matt.
Thank you.
Go back to me.
Back to you.
Back to me. Okay. Oh, we've made a mess of the list, so, but that's, that's been fun. So obviously, clearly, um, I'm gonna bypass three. I think I'm gonna bypass four.
Sure.
I think five, six, seven, we've already for the most. six, seven, we've already for the most part, eight, we've hit on, I'm gonna, excuse me?
Yeah, we've
You've hit them all, I think we've hit them all, so I'm gonna stop at nine and ten, um, because we've talked about inclusionary zoning. But we didn't talk about the other element that um that all generally goes with it, and it's a fee and lieu option for the inclusionary zone. Um, and ten, similarly but different is is taking a look and adding um, a fee to the building, base building permit costs of one to two dollars per thousand of estimated cost. And in both cases, those fees would be placed uh, within our housing trust fund to be administered by our housing authority. Uh, again, for the purchase of the either new co-ops or maintenance of existing co-ops. And perhaps open it up to other things, but at the moment, those would be the top two elements that those funds would be used for. So um, I guess it's either Greg or Jeff, if either one of you wanted, what your your thoughts on on those? And are they preventative in developing a a property? Are they restrictive? Do you shy away from them? Are they? Are they helpful? You see that they can be helpful. What are your general thoughts on?
Nine and ten?
Nine and ten.
You know, I'm not a fan of um either, um, I just don't think they move the needle. Um, but that's probably just the way I'm wired, um, you know, in the sense that if you wanna do things very incrementally and they take a long time, et cetera. Yeah, I mean, I think it could be a little something, but it's not gonna get.
Okay.
It it's interesting, because I knew Jeff and I would be on the same page on this one, you know, it it from where we sit, it's a tough thing to to even talk about supporting, it it's just so counterproductive in a lot of ways. But however, same way Jeff sort of can like look at inclusionary now. I can look at these and say, a town like Farmington has quite a few good graces coming to you. So you have the ability to stretch some of these places, I think, because of how great a town it is. Not everybody can do that. The 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 risk is, and what Jeff hit on, is that when you're looking to, you know, it's nickel and diamond. And it's, it sends a bad message, like, you know, we're not friendly at all. Dressing it up, though, and here's your menu. And let's look at some of these different things, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna look over here for you to ante up, so to speak, to come into our great town, it can work. Um, where we saw it work, for example, is in um your open space for recreation, right? So you're bringing school kids in, God forbid, rather than shoot them, let's just have you pay for them a great deal for open space. So that I can actually pave the path to nowhere and watch it crumble over the years after I had to charge all my buyers five thousand dollars a home because somebody at a town hall meeting said, oh, we want you to pave that thing in the woods. True story. And I actually testified that this past year, and that's why I'm hot on it still, because I had to I had to show them the numbers and stuff. That's the kind of thing that if you're not careful, you end up going down bad paths. You end up with requirements that aren't helping, you end up beating against one another. However, these things, you could tell by the way they're written, people have put a lot of thoughts in. Um, builders, if you have the ability to do work in Farmington and you have a deal that you can put your hands on and it'll certainly pencil out. These things aren't going to be, um, you're not gonna close a door because of these. But just make sure they're done in a way that you can keep that really high. I think that using the right incentives, people are already flocking to the town. If you become friendly, like this inquiry, you're gonna see far better results than if you hunker down and look like you're, you know, taking shots out of a pothole. You stay away from that. Do things large, grand, and here's your trade offs, you give us this, we'll, you know, we'll look for it over here. That that kind of thing, these these are aren't gonna shut the door by any stretch.
But but nine and ten are in the nature of attacks. And the biggest thing that impacts affordable housing is the lack of supply. So it's another disincentive to create supply. And that's why I struggle with the question of inclusionary housing. But, you know, when I really thought about it, I think inclusionary for rentals does make sense. And the thing that put me over the line on that, as I mentioned, was people who've been flipping the developments in town. But also knowing that in this state, there are resources available to help you attain that goal of inclusionary housing. Um, everything you do that makes building housing harder. You know, it all adds up and it all is a disincentive and it creates less supply and that's what drives prices up.
So I'm gonna jump in, I guess, I understand, so I'm I'm struggling to figure out where my tangible is on this conversation with getting to and perhaps I'm just not thinking about it through the right lens. I I'm hearing that we need, we need the more affordable housing. We're close to the gap. Inclusionary zoning, maybe, but it has to be structured properly. And not so much with the fee and lieu or the the linkage fee at the time of building permit. From an incentive stand, like, can you drill in for us a little more specific? I I think the commission is fairly biased. I think our commission is fairly well-run and fairly well-operating as far as being friendly to development. Um, the permits are processed in a timely fashion, they're not asking, the the commission's fairly well-educated, they're not asking for things they should not be asking for. They're um, they're they're informed, they're they're knowledgeable about the applications prior to attending the meetings. Processed, I mean, the statutory times are what they are, but typically we're approving things and much less than the statutory times and the whole eight dash thirty G aside. So from a specific, as far as an incentive, you know, there's density bonuses. What other, what other thing, tangible things make this? If if we were to structure an inclusionary zone, what are the tangible things from a development standpoint that you'd be looking for that would be helpful? And not prohibitive, or that you've seen are prohibitive, and you say, okay, don't, we don't wanna see this, but you've seen in other areas that you do do like X, Y, and Z. I'm struggling with, I think, some of the abstractness of the conversation. And again, that's, it could just be my, no, I'm not, um, I'm not.
It's not just you, Sean.
Okay. I agree.
And that's fine, and 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 if it's too, if we can't get to, that's fine, I don't, um.
So can I ask a question off of yours? So is the ten percent, right, we just, inclusionary zoning, it's ten percent, there's no fee and lieu. Does that incentivize people if we just make it that clear in the regulation? Because they might not want to develop in town?
Yeah, so that's the, in my opinion, so that's the risk, but I think it's a risk worth taking. I I I think, given the data that we have in front of us, what's been approved and then what happens subsequently, that I feel like we got gypped, that we didn't get affordable units when these guys made a bundle.
Right, understood. Yep. Yeah, okay, thank you, so I'm gonna make a question, I don't, I was just trying to, for me, that that's my takeaway today.
So here's, as as a builder and defending policy across the country, I'm gonna tell you that anytime that you restrict the supply side, you're doing the wrong thing, because that's what gets us out of the 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 mess. Is that we want to make sure that we can provide this is, it's the supply in an orderly fashion, but that we need to. These things, anytime you tax in in create that situation, you're gonna take away from that. Now, when I talk to my wife, who's the town clerk, and really looking at what are we gonna do in Burlington, the fact of the matter is, what's the risk worth taking? And that's where you get into, I do think, and that's where a fee and lieu is better than a straight um, requirement mandate that you don't have any alternatives to. So there may be a very tough site that you wished you could do something or other. That's usually what happens with recreation, for example, where you said, we've gotta give the town, let them put a playground in three blocks over. Because I can't do it on my site with wetlands and everything else. So I think that you have to talk about those things. I mean, it's, you know, we fight with the state every year about, they say, we're gonna take part of your building permit and educate everybody to make the world better. They never do that, that goes right into the general fund. That's different than something like this, though. This is, but you have to be careful of how it's used or what it's for. If you just take it in and put it over here and it's not doing anything, then all you've done is restrict. Now you have oversight of it, you have to account for it, you plant, and you haven't certainly helped builders. And remember, we we're talking about builders building, but at the end of the day, it's all our kids that are buying these. It's our relatives, it's the seniors trying to look for a place to live. Somebody's paying the price tag to to keep us working with everything else. That's the issue. That's how you really have to look at.
So so my focus as a resident of this town is to hit the ten percent. And I just can't support anything that isn't gonna get you a certificate of occupancy and impact that eight point three or eight point four percent number. Something that just goes into a fund and God only knows when it's gonna get built. Let me think again about eighty South Route, you approved that in November of twenty twenty two. I'm gonna have it complete with CFOs in December of twenty twenty four. So in two years, you got it done. If something goes into a fund, I don't know what that means. You know, I'm I'm not an advocate of money sloshing around in funds. Just, I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm too cynical.
I, quick story, so Craig Miner, Senator, who was one of the best. Um, I had an argument about this exact thing, you know, take fees from us, do whatever you want, you guys have to be able to run and get get elected again. And he actually pulled me over at Cumberland in Burlington, and he said, hey, I have to apologize to you, remember when um, I swore up and down that there was no way I would ever let that go to the general fund? He said, I just got outvoted today, it's in the general fund. I said, thank you for the apology, but how about all the building, I get it, said, I got it, and I'm sorry about that. But I I was just happy that he fessed up and like, those are true problems. But that that's what Jeff's talking about, you just make sure that the things that you do, you can see results and account for it. If you look like you're just doing things because you've read them in a newspaper and it's strengthening your, it doesn't work that way. Make sure that there's reasons for the things that you do and you can account for success with them fairly quickly. I mean, you know, you don't need four thousand units tomorrow by things that you're putting like, but but you do have to have a game plan on how, where it's getting you.
So, uh, however, um, I would, I would support, I'm just reading this now, I'm sorry, I haven't read it more carefully. If this is, if if certain of the renovations and there's funds necessary for uh, housing stock of the Farmington Housing Authority, I would be in favor of coming up with a solution for that. Because I think that's important. I don't know whether this is the solution, but everything Nancy does, I mean, we're so lucky to have her and
And I think that was the intent when we were talking, I don't know what this was. We had talked about making a housing trust fund, I I I I don't know that we, I ever discussed with anyone how that money would get in there, but I do think it is important. We're talking about getting up to that ten percent, but it's only good if we keep that percent successful. So thinking of like some of the homeownership programs, half of those folks are going to need some assistance to remain in that program. As well as re- rental rental folks or people that have old buildings, they may need some assistance to maintain those at some level. Where that money comes from, I don't know that I gave that part of any thought, but I did suggest that there has to be some sort of fund to assist people. If not, you're gonna reach ten percent, but then, you know, if you foreclose on half of them, it's gonna keep going up and down if you don't talk about maintaining them.
And it's a bad feeling, too, it sends a very difficult message. Can I ask one question? So so what does your um group look like, your like, how many people work with you and what what are you overseeing? How, I'm I'm curious as to what resources it takes, because I I like this a lot.
Yeah, well, it's 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 an entire department and um we provide a wide variety of services. We have
Right here in the town hall.
Right here, well, no, actually, I oversee several different buildings throughout the town. Um, Staples House across the way, the Senior Center, Stone House, the Rec Office, um, Maple Village, and then several housing complexes as well. But we provide the social services, counseling, recreation, as well as the housing and the policies as well. Those, my focus as the director is I manage policies around the programmatic. And then I have a whole staff that does the supportive housing, which is interact or supportive services, not housing, supportive services. Whether it be social service needs, food pantry, entitlements, benefits, or housing. So we have, and then we have a whole group doing recreation and program.
I think that we should just bring you over to Burlington. I was just thinking out loud.
Yeah, Nancy, yeah, hopefully you're training other people, but you cannot go anywhere.
Staff, we have, um, wanna say twelve full-time and then well over a hundred plus staff. Folks, I mean, a variety of areas from maintenance, that housing to the golf course, to recreation, a variety of activities.
Well, in coordination with the food pantry, and the food pantry is all volunteer, so there's volunteer, like, it's really
A lot of services that we provide has a whole volunteer base that oversees that service, so. You know, there's a lot of people involved, a good deal of the the community. We did a study once, we think our entire department hits eighty-two percent of the community in some way. Whether it be someone with a duck, a band, volunteers at the food pantry, uses the food pantry, yeah, it was, we, we actually worked
To have somebody overseeing it allows it to keep flourishing and growing. Because I, and and the need in communities, wealthy or not, is just, it's a real eye-opener to me. When when I look at that, that, it's just unbelievable.
And we get the benefit of not only working with folks in need, but folks who are volunteering as well as, you know, taking part in our sports programs, a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it it really runs the gamut of the entire community.
But the intent would be to, um, any of the fees would go to the housing trust fund, which already is in existence with the town ordinance. Um, and what Nancy already made reference to, which is with the fund that was used to buy the the properties for the co-op. Um, and then it would be
Monitor too, to help direct.
Right, um, and then it would be expanding the and changing the ordinance language for the housing authority to allow not only the purchase, but to allow a maintenance mechanism, which has not been a part of that ordinance uh to date. So there would be two ordinance changes, but that's, that's the genesis of um, of that, of from a fee standpoint, would be to support the housing trust fund and the housing authority, and that money would go directly into those accounts to work with uh with that commission then.
And with that explanation, I did, I think it's more well-received than it would be just thinking
Yeah, no, not to a general fund, I agree, no, I I, um, correct, I I would agree.
I get everything. Giving anything away.
I flipped the page on our, on our list, um, with neighborhoods and real estate trends, I think. I love a lot of narrative, negative impact. I think I think we've hit on all of those. If anyone sees something that I didn't quite, or there's an angle that we didn't
I didn't understand fifteen. Have you ever personally experienced neighborhood opposition to affordable housing? It's a joke.
Yeah. All the time.
Like, how about Jim Fols, right?
Have you ever personally experienced uh opposition anyhow?
Thank you.
Come on, Jeff.
If anybody has a question about rent caps, it thinks that's generally a bad idea, capping rents. It does not allow for just, just talking openly and and we've done a lot of research on that. And look, try to look at both sides. Like, is there um, our latest one? Is there somewhere in between that makes sense? It's anytime that you restrict the free market working, you end up with and it may not be right away. It may be so that people can get elected in two years, four years. But it doesn't work because things get run down and people are always going to. Money will follow success in places where it has a chance to grow. Other than that, you're gonna see drastic results. And we have studies from all over the country in all different shapes, sizes and form. It it just doesn't work. And here's the thing. Blue and red, uh wealthy and more tribe communities. Every economist that looks at this is it can't make it work. It just doesn't work. So economists are gonna be the ones that that drive our debate. And everybody just says that there's better ways to do it. You know, you just can't cap thinking that that it's going to resolve issues.
We've had probably since beginning of COVID, well over thirty requests for fair rent hearings and it's always interesting how thoughtful eighty percent of the landlords are when they're increasing a rent. There's a valid basis for that reason. It's a, I mean, there have been a few that there really has been no thought, just the sky's the limit now, so I think I can get that sky and raise, but I don't really have a a big reason why I'm increasing it that much. But for the most part, that hasn't been our experience. There's been a few that really, just because, hey, I know I can get that much, so I'm gonna do it and I don't care that I'm raising somebody's rent nine hundred bucks a month. They, that's what I can get for it. And that's, you can't do that.
Or just get rid of them and bring somebody
Right, which which you, which again, that is against fair rent guidelines. But for the most part, landlords are really thoughtful. If they're increasing a rent by a significant amount, it's because the need is out there. There that there's something going on that's driving that.
I think in the cities, you see a lot of bad apples. And it's very sad.
But not knowing your
The conditions, you know, like
That's what you have to guard against. And there's different ways to go about fixing that. But you're right. And that's, see, just like, you know, when unions were first established, I mean, things were terrible in a lot of ways. But but this, there there's ways to address how expensive it is to pay the rent. And it's the restrictions in that that way just aren't the the proper way to address it.
So when the rents are set at twenty percent of um AMI or fifty percent of AMI, and that's how those are being marketed, is that not a rent cap? Or how is that? Or the funding, the funding mechanism?
The reason why that works is because we have the ability at that time to see if it works. If you just come in and say, we're just capping rents across the board for this, it's we can't build it. Forget about repairs and fixing it, because at that point, you know what? Maybe we just have to trash them. Now people are stuck living there with no resources to
Okay, so it depends on the funding mechanism. So some of, but some of, so 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 it's a direct it's a direct relationship to the funding that's available as to how your affordable affordability is set up for a given development. And that funding then is set that allows that affordability and then that sets the rent. As opposed to, from a regulatory standpoint, I was saying, it's gotta be X, Y, or Z.
Yes.
It's the same thing, though, Shannon. It would be a a percentage of AMI. And so I'm a proponent that the town come tries to hit the ten percent. But in formulating that strategy decides what, where at AMI they wanna be. So for instance, if they do the math and they say, okay, we need another two hundred homes. They say, okay, we wanted this percent of AMI in order to qualify. Uh, and you would, in your inclusionary housing, you would say, for instance, it has to be affordable, you know. If it's a hundred units and it's ten percent inclusionary housing, it, those units have to be affordable at eighty percent of AMI. So you dictate that, which is the same thing we have in the state housing programs.
Right. But to to drill into those lower AMI, I mean, the eighty percent is the standard benchmark at the at the moment. Um, but to drill into some of the lower, and that's that really starts to, unless the funding mechanisms are there.
Correct.
You have to have funding.
You have to.
It just, it doesn't work. Yeah.
No. And and that's, that's the difference. Where you see communities looking, they hear people say, oh, we can't pay increased rents. Well, we'll fix that. You can't charge more than X. There's no none of that thought that goes into it. And so in the end, you're you're running against a stone wall.
Right, because there's still a base cost, whether it's from a maintenance standpoint or a building standpoint. Now, at the eighty percent AMI, so if the inclusionary zoning is set at an eighty percent AMI, do the numbers work without financing in general? Or or at what point i- is there a density? Or does it, are there too many variables to say it depends on land costs, it depends on building, it depends on finance? You know, just straight, but in the absence of a state or federal financing, is an eighty percent AMI even?
I could go first. From an ownership standpoint, you would have to have a pretty decent density bonus in order to address your ability not to charge fair market for those houses. It's it's a tough hurdle, even at eighty percent. Um, sixty would be impossible at that point. Under eight thirty G, you have both of those components. But eighty is still tricky if you sweep that off the table. So generally, you're looking to get some help to to be able to make that work. And um, fall under a program then. But, you know, it is things are, depending on what deal you have for land. It used to be, when I first started this, I I had a law school and I went with one of my clients to build. It's been a lot of years now. It's like ninety four. But we used to say that land, improved land was twenty five percent of what the the selling price was of it of a home. So if you go four hundred thousand, back then it was, you know, back then. So, but but it was, you know, a hundred to to four hundred. But now it's, you know, I I always joke that we used to always say if you were building on the water, you would have to eat up a lot more um, percentage wise for your land. So now it's like we build everything on the water. That's what it amounts to. That's how expensive land is. And and that whole dynamic is what forced housing prices up in Connecticut. Because you needed to be able to build at a scale to take money from that to be able to pay for the land. And as you start requiring more land to build on and spread it out, so now roads and everything cost more. That's where you get into these McMansions and these wacky formulas that you have to try to beat. And so we're looking to say, let's get back to thinking where we can put duplexes, you know, I mean, who said in other parts of the country, you have a little nice backyard, you put your garden there. You you know, you you have your own kingdom, but you don't need these acres and acres so that nobody can live next to you. You know, I look at my house, our neighbors, we used to play street hockey in front of our yards. Now, for crying out loud, it takes me twenty minutes to get to my neighbor when you get done walking up the driveways and stuff. It's like, you know, you just don't see anybody, any, it's just, there's a whole theory behind this. But I think we have a long way to go to get back to being able to address some of these housing concerns overall. Farmington has many neighborhoods that you can do that with, too, where they're traditional, nice subdivision in communities that that you can get a higher density yield.
Yep. Walk along.
Yeah, so my answer to that is you can't really make eighty percent work without some form of subsidy, unless, as Greg mentioned, you get some kind of zoning density.
Okay. And we're talking density bonus in the, just, again, I understand there's a lot of variables, but we're we're looking at at we, ten units per acre, fifteen units per acre, or we have to go even higher than that?
Yeah, I'd wanna study that, Shannon. I haven't taken a hard look.
That's fair.
And Jeff, I would say, though, before you even go down that path of trying to put stuff on paper, why not try to work with individuals and see if you could come up with something that works for a couple different owners? And see if they said, you know what, maybe I could drop the price to seventeen point four million for this three bedroom in Farmington. Maybe that's a little low. Interest rates the way they are. But you know what I'm saying? That maybe you try to work out and and get some parameters in real life before you just start trying to make numbers fly that might not work for a developer. Especially if somebody has something on the drawing board that you're already talking to. What would it take to lower this price to and then figure out what eighty percent here you mean?
Well, right, but the problem is, right? So if I don't have the regulation in place and they submit and the regulations, so that I can't, right? So I'm like, it's trying to get a regulation in place, but it's gotta be workable.
I'm talking about talks like this, just, because I I I think it it do it in another town. And so that it's not Farmington making representations. Because I'm with you, you know, you don't want anybody latching on to things as promises. But I think it's worth looking at. I always have much better luck with reality than spending decades trying to dot ice across keys on hypotheticals. Because if that's what the state has, I've spent so many times since I was state president of the home builders and what we would go in every year and sit down with the Department of Housing and they would take out these four pages of all the programs. How come you guys don't use this? One, we don't know about them, but do you know it takes fifty pages of applications and things to use this money? And and you wonder why there's no connection. We're starting to get a lot better than that, but this would go a long way to that.
But one quick thing, too. Don't forget, if the town hits the ten percent, it then becomes exempt from eight dash thirty G.
Right.
So separate and aside from the objective of providing affordable housing, which is great, there's some real benefit to that.
There is. Yes, um, but I think there's our affordable, or our affordable needs far outpace just getting that additional two percent.
But, you know, respectfully, there are two different issues, right? So you can continue to foster affordable housing, but then you don't have to approve something that's shoved down your throat, so to speak.
Oh, correct, correct.
That's what he said.
Correct. They're not, I know, is there?
I'd be an advocate of of building, you know, well beyond the ten percent. I understand that. But it's also nice if someone comes in with a horrible development, that you don't have to approve it.
Very true.
If there's one place that you would look to be able to use eight thirty G and get those density bonuses, Farmington's on the top of the list. In fact, if you guys have any maps, I'd like to take a look. Now that I know all of you, I'm figuring I could sell things. I I mean, I'm watching that, Jeff, blinking every two seconds.
Okay, um, I think we've hit on all the questions that had been submitted. I don't know if any of you have any other, as the conversation's taken a few interesting twists and turns, good evening.
And as, and we walk out of here, if you have more questions, just get them to us. We'll get you answers. I think it's worth it. I I also really think that people are gonna be looking to see what results you come up with. There's a lot.
Yeah, no pressure.
There's a lot of towns that are in this predicament now, because they're at a high high visibility towns. We talk about it all the time at CHFA, too. Lot of towns, high visibility, very much in demand. What are they doing?
You know, as a resident of this town, I'm really proud of what this commission has done over thirty years with affordable housing in Farmington. The main thing that we strive for is that when people look at the development, they don't say, oh, that's the affordable housing, that it just blends in and and I think the stuff that we've done uh does that, and I think the the stuff that other others have done in town. Um, but, you know, the town has always been out in front on this thing. Uh, eight point, I don't know what our number is. I think it's right around eight point three, but that's laudable. I mean, that's way ahead of other towns that are like us. And um, I think that we have a real legacy to protect as we go forward on this thing, because going way back with all those other commissions, right through you folks, you've just all done a spectacular job and um, everything that's in town has stood the test of time.
Yeah.
And uh, it's all been good development and um, we've got the numbers and statistics to back it up. And I think we should put together as a town, uh, a real credible plan for, you know, getting to to ten percent. Because I think, as I mentioned, that has the dual purpose of providing the affordable housing, but then also you no longer have the threat of a bad plant.
For the little land that we have, right? But still, right.
Well, you'd be surprised. People find land. And they, it's not downtown and they rehabilitate things.
Development.
People are creative.
That's what's gonna happen next, right? You're gonna have infill and you're 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 gonna have property that's, you see it on the shore, you see it in the towns where property values it, but that's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah. Well, we saw some of the development that we've already uh approved, some of those thousand units of of rental housing. Two hundred and fifty of them were, that's the redevelopment of the Marriott. So, uh, so you're seeing, we're seeing.
I mean, who would have thought of that?
Right?
Exactly.
And that's been the questions. We're good for questions.
Think of all the potential for empty office buildings.
Yep. Yeah, great point. Yeah.
Wow, this was amazing. Thank you so much.
Very informative.
It it feels good that we're in a right fight. Right? We're doing a lot of goodness here. A lot of us are ending our term this year, but that's okay. Um, why are you laughing? I'm not, oh, just to remind myself, it's okay.
Few times.
So the elections coming up will fill those spots.
Yep.
Some of you, some of you aren't running.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. So there's elections in November and there's uh, correct, it'll uh
Shannon will have a new board.
Dramatically change the makeup of the of the commission, so, but that's all right.
Yeah. I find it in the, our towns that um, there's a lot of commissions that you look at and you can't tell what initial is next to their name unless you really love, because it's about something much bigger than your party minds, when we're doing real life stuff.
Yeah. Thankfully, that's been the case.
Yes, and especially this commission, you know, I used to sit in as a resident and uh, there were, you know, like you said, every town is different, but there were some tough decisions, of course, that we had to make, but everyone cares here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was on my wetlands commission for years. That's a little bit more objective. You're supposed to, you know, a lot of it's defined science. You still have some subjectivity, but this board is setting policy moving forward. A lot of times even more so, school boards, but selectmen, but just town council, but this board is
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that. It's it's been a lot of fun, a lot of learning, right?
A lot of challenges.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. But uh, you definitely helped, helped us frame this. Uh, we really appreciate your transparency. Um, the fun stories, Nancy, I don't know how you do what you do. Thank you for your service. And Shannon. You, you go, Shannon. Shannon, thank you.
So, all right. So, all right, good. Well, awesome. Yes, we officially adjourned meeting.
Yes, we're good. Yep.
Nine oh two and um, thank you. Yeah.